Welcome to Centenary United Methodist Church and our study, "Coping as Christians." This is Lesson 5, and if you're following in the workbook, it's on page 71. That's where we're beginning. You can pick up previous lessons on our website, on Facebook, and we'd love to have you do that, or just jump in right where you are. For the lesson, you'll need a Bible, and you'll need something to write on and something to write with, so that you can take notes. And always remember, you can hit pause, so that you have a few moments to write down and take some notes. My name is Robert Gorrell, and I'm the Senior Pastor, and I'm delighted to share this time with you. I wanted to give a shout out this week to a couple of things that are happening in our church. We have a wonderful group from Missions, and they're working through what we call the St. John's Feeding Program, to help feed hungry people here in Lawton. Even in the midst of this virus, the coronavirus, and the pandemic we're in, they're still finding very clever ways to be safe and practice social distancing, but also to feed hungry people. And I want to mention that also, another project we have going on that's so wonderful is our youth. They make these sack lunches at home, and they're non-perishable items, and then we give them out to folks who are in need, and also to support our first responders throughout the community, and people working in hospitals and nursing homes, ambulance services, fire department, and of course, our neighbors who are less fortunate, many of whom live on the streets, and we help feed them. So I just thought you'd like to hear about those great things that are happening in the life of our church as we begin our lesson. This is the second part of a lesson we started last week, and it's on stress. I guess there wasn't any church that gave Paul more stress than the church in Corinth. And in a moment, we're going to be reading from 2 Corinthians, Chapter 1, if you want to find that in your Bibles. Corinth is an amazing place today, and it was an amazing place then. It's located in such a way that by going through Corinth, you had a shortcut between Rome and Asia Minor, what we would think of as the Middle East today, Turkey and Israel and places like that. And so, it was a popular trade area. It was also a very wealthy area. People who lived there tended to be very wealthy. A lot of Roman dignitaries and soldiers retired in the area, so you had great wealth. But you also had great poverty. There were very poor people. There were slaves, of course. Roman Empire was, some people estimate, there were 20 slaves for every free person in the Roman Empire. So great poverty. Because it was a crossroads, and such an important crossroads in the Roman Empire, there were people there from all over the world. They just came from everywhere. And these people all mixed together to form the church in Corinth. They also had come from different religious backgrounds. Some were Jews, some believed in the Greek gods, some believed in the Roman gods, some believed in the gods of Egypt, even gods from further beyond the borders of the Roman Empire, found a home in Corinth. And Corinth was famous for having so many temples to so many different religions. Folks came out of those religions and formed the church in Corinth, and that's why Paul gives so many instructions and directions. You probably wonder why Paul gets into things like hairstyles, and how women should wear their hair, and how men should wear their hair. It's because in those other religions, the way you wore your hair denoted the God you followed, and certain practices in your life. And Paul wanted Christians, when they came out of those, what we call mystery religions, as they came out of those, to really change everything about themselves. So he even talked about hairstyle, and what you should wear and what you shouldn't wear, as he was helping these folks transition and become the church. Because they were so different, you'd have a church meeting, and there would be a slave owner, and there would be a slaves in the same service. You'd have a church meeting, and there would be a former Roman military officer, and there would be people from a country that he had fought against. They would all be right there in church together. And so, there was a lot of stress. There was a lot of chaos always going on in the church. And some of the leaders in the church began to react to that stress in a way that's pretty familiar. If you've been in leadership, or you've been faced with a really stressful decision, they began to react to the stress and the pull of this group and that group by making no decision at all. They just got stuck. They got stuck. The stress caused them to be stuck, and they were worried. What do I choose? What do I do? You know, if I say yes to this group, then that group is going to be mad at me. And if I say yes or no to this group, then the other group is going to be mad at me. And so, they were just stuck, and the church was stuck, and the church couldn't progress at all. I can remember going to a new church many years ago, and we were in our first trustees meeting, and things I thought were pretty routine, but suddenly, the trustees got into a huge fight over what color to paint the door of the tool shed. Wasn't even the main building, wasn't close to the main building. It was a parking lot in between, but we had a little shed where we kept the lawn mowers and stuff. And it was a huge argument, and people were so upset about what color to paint the door. In fact, one of the trustees finally said, "We just can't even talk about this ever again, because it'll just split the church." Imagine splitting the church over the decision of what color to paint the door on the tool shed. That's kind of what Paul dealt with, and we've, some of us, I think most of us, have been in those situations where we're just stuck by stress and conflict. And so, Paul writes these words to the church at Corinth. This is from 2 Corinthians, Chapter 1, beginning with verse 17. "Was I facilitating when I wanted to do this? Do I make my plans according to ordinary human standards, ready to say yes, yes, and no, no, at the same time? As surely as God is faithful, our word to you has not been yes and no. For the Son of God, Jesus Christ, whom we proclaimed among you, Silvanias, and Timothy, and I, was not yes and no; but in Him it is always yes. For in Him every one of God's promises is a yes. And for this reason, it is through Him that we say amen to the glory of God." So Paul is saying to the church leaders there, "You need to make a decision, and you need to face this stress by not remaining stuck where you are, but by really asserting your will," which is the, one of the things we're going to talk about today is a way to deal with stress. When you're in those situations, and you're caught, and you're stuck, you have to find a way to assert your will. And that's what Paul is saying. He's saying, "I didn't vacillate while I was with you, and Timothy didn't, and Silvanias didn't. You know, we said yes, we made a decision, and we went with it." Jesus says something similar in the Gospel of Matthew, in Chapter 5 of that Gospel, verse 37. It's words I heard my mother quote to me so many times growing up, the words of Jesus in Matthew 5:37. "Let what you say be simply yes or no." I was a child who, and my wife could tell him, still have this characteristic, when it comes to a big decision, I like to think about it, and think about it, and think about it. If I'm going to buy a car, I'll probably take six months to make the decision, must to her chagrin. I can mull something over and over again in my head. I was like that as a child, and my mom would quote this verse to me. "Say yes or say no, but make a decision and get on with it." That's Jesus' advice to His followers. When you're dealing with stress, you have to assert your will. You have to decide on a path, and then go ahead and take the steps to make that, to follow that path. And we don't do that out of competition, because we're trying to assert our will over somebody else, and beat them, and get a win. We don't do it for that reason. We don't do it because of ego, because it makes me feel good that I'm getting my way and you're not. We don't do it out of a need to win, you know, that I have to always get my way. And we're doing it because we're overcoming the stress of being stuck. So I want to invite you now to take a few moments, and in your journal, or whatever you're writing on, and just simply list the places where I am caught between yes and no. Take a few moments, you can hit pause, and list the places where you are caught between yes and no. Well, I hope that you've taken a moment to do that. I can think back to when I was a young man, and one of the worst, most painful times of my life was when I knew a relationship was coming to an end. And both of us, me and the other person, we both knew that this relationship was just not going to continue. But we didn't want to say goodbye, we didn't want to break it off, we didn't know how to end it. And we just stayed stuck in it, and it was really miserable for both of us, but we just couldn't figure out a way to get out of it. C.S. Lewis wrote a magnificent book, and maybe we'll do a study on it sometime, called The Great Divorce. And it's not about marriage. It's about the divorce between God and His creation. And in that book, which he calls a fantasy, he regards it more as science fiction than theology, although it's all about heaven and hell. In that book, he postulates, he puts out this idea that's very powerful, as he tells it, of people who are in hell, and they can leave hell anytime they want to in the story. All they have to do is just walk to a bus stop, and get on a bus, and the bus will take them to heaven. But they're just stuck. They're stuck. They see the world the same way they always have, even though they've died, even though they've been given an invitation to get on the bus and go to heaven, they're just stuck in their old thinking. They can't shed it. They worry about this thing and that thing, even though they're no longer living in the world, they're still so overwhelmed with that stress and that sense of being stuck that it causes them to remain in hell. And for C.S. Lewis, that was one of the images of hell, is just being stuck between yes and no, and being overwhelmed with the stress that causes you to be stuck in that place. So we want to, we want to think about some ways that we do that. And first, of course, as we mentioned, is assert your will. That means to begin to take some steps to change things. It's amazing how, when you take that first step, how that can start to change the situation. And I always recommend that, you know, you don't try to take a giant step and do it all at once, but you try to take one step and make it different. When I was a caseworker, one of my assignments was to work with, I was responsible for children, mostly children who had parents in prison, and I would work with their parents on how to have a relationship with their children. And one of the things that we would try to do is to give them small steps that they could take in their relationship with their child. And when you're in prison, and you're locked up, there's not a lot you can do. You can't go out and do big things, and you can't go out and do big things for the people who you've hurt. So we tried to break it down into small steps, and one of those small steps, I remember so well, was just me saying to the person who was incarcerated, "When you see your child on visiting time, the first thing you do, smile at them. Make eye contact and smile." So many people in that situation, when the child would walk into the room for visitation, they would just look sad, or angry, or frustrated, because they were so upset with the situation. The child, particularly young children, couldn't interpret that. All they saw was an unhappy parent. "I've come to visit them, and they're unhappy." So take that small step as we begin to assert our will. What is that first simple thing we can do to start to change the situation that's causing us stress? Some of the other things that we're talking about are allowing God to be God. This is where you want to take some notes. To acknowledge your stress, to admit your limitations, and to assert your will. And I want to take a few moments today to talk a little bit about allowing God to be God. I just think that's incredibly important. It's one of the most important lessons in my life. In Maxie Dunham's book, he tells a beautiful story, and I'd like to share that with you a little bit. It's a story that a man named Robert Gore wrote, and it's about his daughter. And to understand the story, the background is that he has a daughter named Kirby, and she was a beautiful young girl. She was into a modeling career, and a dancer, and just a very physically strong and powerful person, and beautiful person. And she was riding on the back of a motorcycle, and you can guess where this is going. There was an accident, and she was paralyzed from the waist down. And Robert Gore, and his wife, and his other daughter, they all had to learn, you know, how do you live in this world where a member of our family has gone through this terrible accident? Kirby spent 110 days in the hospital, about three weeks in intensive care, and has just gone through this horrible time. He tells this one story, and I think it's powerful, and I'd just like to read part of it to you today. "God was supposed to see the note, not her mother and I. Kirby had carefully pasted the brief message on the fly leaf of her Bible. One of her sisters, snooping as teenagers do, found the note. Her sister brought us the piece of bright yellow stationery, saying that she felt it was important, and that we needed to read it. As we stood there reading, Kirby's laughter came floating through the room from somewhere else in the house. When Kirby laughed, she laughed. She laughs loudly, and she means it. The note read, 'Dear God, please give me faith to be strong and to heal my body. Please make me a better person to be around. Dear Lord, please hold me. Love, Kirby.'" Robert Gore goes on and says, "There's no class for parents to prepare them for what happened to their daughter. There's no class, no course to get you ready for that phone call, that trip to the hospital, and those weeks of watching their daughter suffer, as she struggled first to just remain alive, and then to deal with her injuries and her situation." But he ends the story by saying, "God is holding Kirby. God always was holding Kirby." And the power of the story is that Kirby invited God to hold her and to be God in her life. I want you to think about those things that you listed, those stressful things in your life, those places where you feel stuck between yes and no. Take a look at those for a moment, and you can jot down any notes, you can hit pause and jot down notes if you'd like. But what would happen in those situations if you just allowed God to be God, to allow God to deal with those stressful situations, and invited God just to hold you? I've always liked Psalm 16, and I want to begin with verse 5 of that Psalm. Psalm 16, beginning with verse 5, and I'll read through 11. "The Lord is my chosen portion and my cup; you hold my lot. The boundary lines have fallen for me in pleasant places; I have a goodly heritage. I bless the Lord who gives me counsel; in the night also my heart instructs me. I keep the Lord always before me; because He is my right hand, I shall not be moved. Therefore my heart is glad, and my soul rejoices; my body also rests secure. For you do not give me up to shiel, and you do not leave me in the pit. You have shown me the path of life; in your presence there is the fullness of joy; in your right hand there are pleasures forevermore." I just love what the psalmist says there. Now, think about those first lines in verse 5. "The Lord is my chosen portion and my cup." A portion is what you have in a meal, and a cup is what you drink. And the author of this psalm is saying that God is enough for me. What I have from God is enough. I don't need to worry about the rest of it. I don't need to be overwhelmed with stress. That portion that God has placed on the table before me, that's enough, and I'm going to be focused on that, satisfied with that, and fulfilled in that. And then in verse 6, "The boundary lines have fallen for me in pleasant places." So often, we look at our life, and we feel stressed, because there are boundaries, there are things we can't do. There's a lot of things, now that I'm in my 60s, that I used to do in my 20s, that I've had to come to grips with the fact I'm not going to do anymore. And at times, that's been very hard for me. It's been a real struggle, and some of you know that struggle. But to also be able to understand that those boundaries shape your life in a different way, that you're in a different place in life now, and you can, maybe in my case, for instance, I can spend more time in personal reflection, and thinking about my relationship with Christ than maybe I did in the past, when I was focused on other things. He also says, "I have a goodly heritage." And that's so incredibly important, I think, that sense of being able to look back over your life and recognize those places where God has been involved in your life, to know that there is a tradition, a heritage there, of God caring for me and ministering to me in the midst of stress. He says, "I bless the Lord who gives me counsel." To do that, to bless God for the way that God leads you and guides you, means that you have to recognize God as your leader and as your guide. And you can only give thanks for that, you can only bless that, once you've allowed God to have that role in your life. Once you're letting God lead your life in those situations that cause you stress, those places where you're stuck between yes and no, only then can you really give thanks for it. And He's giving thanks, because He's allowing God to do that. "I keep the Lord before me always," is a way of saying that I'm letting God be in the front of this situation. Too many times in my life, I turn to the Lord after I've already gotten myself into a mess, after I've already gotten myself into trouble. He's saying that we need to let God lead and follow where God leads us. That doesn't mean there won't be challenges, but that means that we have an extraordinary help from God in those situations. One of the reasons I left the profession of being a family counselor and a caseworker, a social worker, and became a pastor, is because I was very frustrated in my previous role, because I was seeing people after there'd already been so much damage done in their lives and in their relationships. And I really, I really saw God as a way to enable and equip people, that God wanted to have that place in our life, of enabling us and equipping us and preparing us, so that when we did face challenges and stress in life, we already had tools ready for that situation. And I think we really see that in the pandemic. It's kind of funny, some of the pastors, we've been sort of laughing about it, because we say to our church members, "Go to Sunday School, go to Bible study, go to this course, and learn to pray, go to this class, and learn what the will of God is for your life." And sometimes, that sort of happens just sort of out there on the side. Right now, I think a lot of us are really realizing how important those things are. People who had already done that in their life were equipped for this time of pandemic, and people who had not, right now, are searching for those tools, and they're trying to learn to do those things. And that's okay, we can help each other do that, but it's important to do those things to prepare ourselves for what is coming. There's a line in here in the second half of verse 7 that really kind of sort of chastises me, it sort of holds me accountable. He says, "In the night my heart instructs me." And that's kind of, you can read that two ways. You can, if you connect it to what comes before, "I bless the Lord who gives me counsel; in the night also my heart instructs me." What he's saying is that at night, when he's laying down and putting his head on the pillow, he's not worried about the stressful stuff, because God is counseling him and ministering to him and caring for him, and he's receiving that, he's allowing himself to receive that. It's kind of convicting to me, because lots of times, I lay my head down on the pillow at night, and I'm not thinking about God's counsel, I'm not thinking about letting God be God. I'm thinking about all the situations I've got to deal with, and how am I going to fix it? How am I going to find a solution? How am I going to get this thing straightened out? The writer here, because he's allowing God to be God in his life, he's spending his nights very differently. When he lays his head down, he's gaining rest, he's gaining peace and comfort, because he's allowing God to be God in his life. He says, "Therefore my heart is glad, and my soul rejoices, and my body rests secure." If you're going through a lot of stress, you know your body's not resting. You're not getting sleep, you're worried all day long, and it takes a physical toll. We talked about that in the last lesson. To allow God to be God in your life is literally to start allowing your body to release some of that stress. And I want to talk about briefly a way that you might do that. There's lots of different ways to pray, and if you have Maxie Dunham's book, he'll talk about a soaking prayer, which is a very powerful way to pray. I don't feel like we can do that on video, but I think there's another way that we can think about praying that is very helpful, and that's in a breath prayer. In a breath prayer, as you inhale, you proclaim your name for God. It might be my God, my Lord, my Savior, Jesus, whatever that might be. And then, as you exhale, you know, you make your petition, or you ask God for God's help, or you give God thanks. For instance, I might pray as I inhale, "Dear God, as I exhale, guide me." So inhale, "Dear God," and as I exhale, "Guide me." I'd like you to try that now, just hit pause for a few moments, and just do that. As you inhale, think of the words, "Dear God," and as you exhale, the words, "Guide me." Breath prayers are so powerful. Many times, when I've been in a hospital or a nursing home with someone as they near the end of their life, that's the kind of prayer I pray. And I would just invite you that, to do that as you face stress, and to really focus on letting God be God in that situation. "Dear Lord, be God for me now. Dear God, you take this." And just to breathe that and pray that over and over again. As the psalmist says, "You show me the path of life; in your presence there is fullness of joy; in your right hand are pleasures forevermore." There's joy in life when I allow God to be God, and allow God to be the one who leads me through that stress. And I find that when I allow God to do that, then I can heed the words of Jesus. I can let my yes be yes, and my no be no. I can't do that in my own strength. I'm not that strong. I'm just not that strong. I have to have God's help to do that. I have to, to recognizing, recognize, as Maxie talked about in the previous chapter, the indwelling of Christ, that Christ will come into my life and spend time in my life if I invite Christ in, and then I can rely on the strength of Christ in those stressful moments, and in those times when I'm caught between yes and no. So look at the notes you've listed about those stressful places, the places where you're caught between yes and no, and just think about those for a moment. What would happen if you let God lead you in that situation? What would that look like for you? And maybe your first small step will be simply praying a breath prayer several times during the day, inviting God to lead you in that stressful situation in your life. You know, Reinhold Niebuhr was a great theologian. He was once, you know, on the cover of magazines like Time and Life, and the world, people all over the world listened and read what he wrote, and he left one thing with me that I always think about. He talked about the two kinds of sin. For him, they fell into two categories. The first was sloth, which is a word from, you know, his time, right there in World War II, in the end of World War II. Sloth means laziness, and he talked about the sin of laziness, which is not a sin of, you know, not getting up in the morning and going to work. It's not what he's talking about. He's talking about not living up to the person that God created you to be. And by allowing God to lead our life, then we can begin to take the steps that are necessary to be that person that God has created us to be. And Niebuhr also talked about another category of sin, of the two categories, and that was idolatry. And idolatry, we think about, you know, golden calves and idols like that, but in our culture, really, idolatry is worshiping ourselves, making ourselves into God. It's what I do when I lay my head on the pillow at night and say, "God, I've got this really big..." I don't say "God," I just say to myself, "I've got this really big problem, and I've got to figure out a solution." to figure out a solution. I've got to come up with a plan. I've got to find a way to deal with it." And that's really the sin of idolatry, Niebuhr would say, that in fact, we have to, to, to recognize that we're not God and allow God to, to, to come to us in the indwelling Christ and begin to, to really lay before us the steps that will take us from that stressful, stressful place and, and carry us on. Um, and it's really hard. It, it's really hard because, because what we want to do is, um, we want to come up with a big bang thing, that I'm going to do this one huge thing and this problem is going to be completely gone. And it's pretty rare when that works, to be honest. Uh, most of the time, we, we change those things that relieve the stress in our life by asserting our will and asserting our will in a way that allows God to be God and taking very small steps. Uh, I can remember again, saying to the people who are incarcerated, "Practice right now, while you're in prison, you can practice right now, every time your child walks in for visitation, smile at them. Get in that habit. Be focused on them, not on yourself and your problems. Be focused on them and develop that habit now so that when you are released, you'll have that habit already. You're going to see them then every day probably and you'll have that habit already as a part of who you are, that every time you see them, you'll smile." And that will, they'll, they'll recognize that as love. Uh, I think about the stressful situations in my life and asserting my will means to take those small steps and allow God to be God and allow God to lead me. Uh, that's the power of those situations, uh, being turned over to God. Uh, and sometimes when we take those small steps and allow God to lay those out before us, uh, it, it's really challenging. It takes a lot of faith because as we see each of those little steps develop, we may not be able to see the end of the path. Uh, we may not understand where God is leading us. We just know that, that right now today, this is the thing I have to do to take the next step in my faith. And, um, whenever we start to do that, uh, we're going to be challenged. And, uh, if we start to take those steps and we assert our will and we let God be God in our life, uh, it's not like the challenge is going to go away. The things that work against us are probably going to increase. There's a medical principle called homeostasis, in which everything in the body tends to remain the same. It's why, uh, when we try to lose weight, it's so difficult and we may be able to do it for 30 days and then we go back and, and we put the weight back, right back on. It's, it's because of, of the principle of homeostasis and that's true spiritually. Uh, when we start to make a change, things work against us and push us to remain the, the same. Uh, Edwin Friedman, who was a great psychoanalyst and he, uh, he, uh, he was a rabbi, a Jewish rabbi, and, and was particularly gifted in helping families who were in difficult situations. He, uh, he wrote a book of little fables, little, 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 just like Aesop's fables, in, in which he invited people to look at those fables, find themselves in the fable and, uh, and sort of begin to think about their situation. And one of those most famous fables is, uh, is about a man. And the man goes on a journey and he's been dreaming of this. He's been dreaming on making a change in his life. Uh, he really wants things to be different and he knows what he needs to do and he needs to go from where he is right now to, to this location. He needs to start that journey, take it step by step and go. And so the man is excited and he, and he starts off on the journey and things are progressing well. And he comes to a bridge and there's another person on the bridge and the bridge has, uh, the other person has a rope tied around their waist and they hand the man, the traveler, they hand him the rope and they jump off the bridge. And, and so the traveler suddenly has to hold the rope and the guy is dangling there by the rope. And the traveler says, "Climb up the rope. I'll try to help you, but climb up the rope." And the guy dangling from the rope says, "No, I'm your total responsibility. Whether I live or die is totally in your hands." And, and the man says, the traveler says, "No, you've got to help me. I'm not strong enough to pull you up. Try to climb up. I'll try to hold you and, and I'll try to help you get up." And the man says, "No, I won't do it." He says, "I, I've totally put my life in your hands." And the traveler is stuck there on the bridge, holding this guy. He's just stuck. He can't let go. The guy will fall in down below, who knows what might happen to him, but he's not strong enough to pull him up. And Friedman leaves us there in the story and invites us to think, what are those things and who are those people that are keeping us from making the journey from where we are right now to where God is calling us to be? And how are we going to respond? And how are we going to change things so we can continue the journey? When do you need to hold the rope and when do you need to let go? This is coping as Christians at Centenary United Methodist Church and we look forward to the next time we're together.